Steve, you're up, but Mark's not. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. It is 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you to give us wisdom, patience, and good judgment, righteous judgment, as we make these decisions for the community. We thank you for everything you have given us. We ask you to continue blessing this great country that we live in. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from April 23rd, 2024, regular session. Entertain motion for approval? Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff, may be placed on a future agenda, or addressed by some other course of response. Greg and Susie, Miles?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to address some of the issues that were happening on Mallard Drive. I see that on your--
Can you speak into the mic, ma'am? They can't hear.
I see on your agenda that you have the replat for Mallard Point on your agenda. Some of the concerns on Mallard, in the Mallard Point area, is the flooding that the Altrera builders are causing on our property. I'm not opposed to the Altrera homes going in there. I welcome that, actually, but it is causing some problems. When they built that addition, they filled in the ponds, and now all this water has nowhere to go but my backyard. It actually backs up all the way down our street, and it takes several days for this to drain because there's nowhere for it to drain. So I'm just wanting to know if they turned any kind of engineering drawings in? Do they have any plans for the-- where this water's supposed to go, other than sitting in my backyard? And maybe they do. I don't know. We haven't talked to-- we haven't been able to talk to anybody from there. But I know that the replat for Mallard Point is gonna be on this-- is on the agenda, and I would just like to have this addressed. I don't know who needs to take care of that. I do have recent pictures of this flooding that I'd like to give.
Sure.
Do you need these?
I would like to, please. Thank you. And I'll get these with you also.
I've put the addresses on the tops of those pages. You can see where even three houses down, it backs up so much in their driveway that they can't even get to their vehicles. So, of course, all that water has to drain downhill into my backyard. The pond used to sit right behind our house, and like I said, since that's been filled in, it's also been built up. The dirt has been built up. So we-- really, the water just sits there until it just absorbs into the ground. And right now, it's so wet, it's not absorbing into anything, other than staying a pond in my backyard. So if-- we'd just like to know if that can be addressed with the Altrera to maybe have plans to put something in that's gonna cause that to not happen in my yard.
Okay. Ryan, do you have anything on that? I mean, we can talk about it, Daniel, since it's on the agenda, correct?
Yes, right.
Okay.
So with the replat for Altrera, they do have civil plans that were approved by the court. They were approved by the engineering-- by Hickman Hour engineers as well. They have addressed all of-- any kind of stormwater runoff. They have mitigated it through the-- with those plans. The way the old section of Mallard Point is designed, it's supposed to drain from the backyards towards the road, and these are the existing houses that they live in on Mallard Drive there. They're supposed to drain from the back to the street and then down the road ditch. The new section of Altrera that they are putting in today, the civil plans are not lot-to-lot drainage. They are draining out to their roads, the new roads that they're constructing, and down the road ditch. So I've talked to a couple of people. When the project first started, I talked to a couple of folks that lived there in the old section of Mallard, and they had some concerns. There were some silt fence concerns and some other concerns about that. I addressed them with Altrera themselves, with the guys who run Altrera. They went out, they replaced silt fence. I've looked at the project myself as it's been going on. Any water that's falling on the project site is contained pretty well to that site. It's running to the roads. The water that they're getting in the existing homes in their backyards, that drainage should be running out to the road. Altrera has not done anything in the old section as far as changing flow of water or anything such as that. They're-- we're in a pretty wet season. The flooding problems that they're having, if it's standing in their driveways, I don't necessarily know if that's a new section of the plat issue or not. If it's standing in their driveways, it should be running from their lots out to the existing road ditch.
Who's reviewing it, Mark? Hickman?
Mark.
Can you get with him and go out there and look at that?
I can.
And see if they can do something about it?
I'll look at it, and we'll look at it.
If it's just a matter of during the construction phase, it's not graded, and maybe we've got a problem because of temporary situation, but let's make sure we take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll-- I'll get with him. We'll take a look at it. And that subdivision, the final-- the final for the replat is on today, but this will not be accepting the roads or starting the pond. That still requires another inspection and--
We still won't be recording it until they get it finished.
That's correct. That's correct. Construction is not-- has not completed on the new section yet.
Okay.
May I say something in reference to this, if I may, and I believe you'll verify this. At first, this was within the judicial territory of Greenville, and they had started it. And then we changed judicial territory, which it became ours, and we stopped all of it. And then we had the engineers come in, advise them that they needed to work with, and then it was verified by Mark. Right?
Uh, somewhat, yes.
Yes.
This section was not in the ETJ of Greenville. The next section that they had planned was.
Correct. The back part of it was. Yes, sir.
Right.
If I'd like to give these to y'all, too, you'll have this information when y'all get with--
Sure. Come to the mic, please, ma'am.
We have lived there for 10 years, and we've never had this flooding like this, ever. And it's rained in those 10 years, too. And we've had heavy rain seasons also in 10 years. But our yard has never sat in water like this. So I've never talked to this man. My husband's never spoken to anybody from Altrera Homes. We have several neighbors that's never spoken to anybody.
He's our employee.
I'm sorry?
The man that came into the mic is our employee.
Okay. Well, we've never spoken to anybody, and we've actually reached out to them. We've never heard from anyone. So this is a big issue for us. We've never-- the water's always drained to the pond. It's-- when you fill it in the pond, you have to have somewhere for the water to go. When you fill in a pond and you build the dirt up, it's created a barrier. So that water really just sits there. I feel like it's somebody else's responsibility to move that water from my backyard.
We understand, but what he was saying was on y'all's construction plans, when y'all's subdivision was put in, he said it was designed for that water to flow to the street out of y'all's yard. And it's not because it went-- it was going to the back, for whatever reason. But Brian works for us. He's Community Development Director. Mark Hickman is our engineer, our consulting outside engineer. We're gonna ask them to go out there and take a look at it and see what we can do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And do I need to have this call and have this put on an agenda for future, if this is--
We'll follow up on it, but you're welcome to come back every meeting until it's resolved, if you want to.
Okay.
Or call us, and either way you wanna handle it.
All right. Thank you.
Natasha, Tatum Head?
Hey, I'm Natasha. Mine are similar. The pictures that they gave for the driveway is my driveway. And it does run towards the front, as it always has, but it has been pretty substantial where it's taking up more than half my driveway, where you can get in your vehicle if you have mud boots. But on a typical day that it's rained, it's pretty deep. We measured, I think, a week ago that it's-- it was up to two inches. So I guess-- I believe what Susie's trying to say is, I understand that it's supposed to run to the front of our lots, but I believe with the changing and the taking out of the pond and so on, it's creating more water our direction that we haven't seen in the past, and therefore, it's taking a lot longer to runoff. And there are areas that it's now standing. My concern is, summer's here. It's gonna start getting warm. My kids play outside, and I have concerns with the standing water and the mosquitoes and the other things that it will bring.
Okay. We understand. We're gonna take a look at it and see what we can do. Uh-huh. Mark White, you gotta put tape over that logo.
Did you see this, Judge?
Yeah, I saw that. You make my aggie blood boil.
I thought we were friends.
Yes. Well, we were until you came up here and laughed.
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. I do want to remind you guys, you have a three-day get-out-of-jail rule in case you forgot to get flowers for your wives and mothers. So just FYI. Winston Churchill said, "The truth is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it, ignorance may deride it, but in the end, there it is." Well, truth is always gonna prevail. And in fact, Thomas Jefferson said that difference of opinion leads to inquiry, and inquiry leads to truth. There's always gonna be some that disagree or have a difference of opinion, but the truth is always gonna prevail. Everyone must educate themselves and make the best decision available for themselves and hopefully for the community, but it's imperative that the truth, and not ramblings or speculation, be looked at. For example, we continue to encourage an open dialogue with people in the merit area that-- so that facts and truth can be discerned and explained. We'll continue to address questions and concerns going forward, even if they disagree with the path that we're on. So I'm also sure that you're aware that there's a change of leadership in Farmersville coming with the election of a new mayor, Mr. Craig Overstreet. So I'm hopeful that the annexation of the Chaparral Trail will be reversed, and Merritt will be able to move forward with its efforts to protect our rural and agricultural lifestyle. And once again, though, I want to just thank you all for the job that you do and how you handle yourselves in a professional manner. It is so encouraging to see leaders in our community be the leaders they need to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else wish to speak? Now, I'll close the public testimony. We'll go to Old Business under Action Items. Number one, consider and approve reimbursement agreement between Adapture Renewals and Hunt County for the already incurred and anticipated future damages to County Road Surrender and Adapture's Solar Farm Construction Project between Signal Road and Rancho Road in Precinct Three. Daniel?
Did everybody get a copy of the agreement in their packet? It's a one-pager.
We didn't have it. It wasn't in my packet.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing it.
No. Thank you.
Okay. As I'm sure you remember, there's a very large solar farm being built south of Greenville, east of 34. There's been quite a bit of damage to the roads in that area. Commissioner Martin went and spoke with the people who were building that, and they agreed to cover the cost for any damages. We worked out this agreement where they are agreeing upfront to pay for any and all costs of repairing or reconstructing those roads. And they have also changed the ingress and egress to that area and gone down roads that are either hardened state roads that are much thicker and able to handle the truck traffic, and stopped using some of the smaller roads. Initially, like even on the very first day, there was a massive amount of damage out there. But they understand that they're gonna have to pay for that. That's what this agreement is for. It's ready for you to vote on. But if you'd like a few minutes to read that, we can come back afterward and vote on it, if you'd like to do that.
Hello?
May I say this, Your Honor?
Sure.
I appreciate it. Basically, this was an agreed-upon vote, and we walked-- talked with it, 3501, 3503, 3507, and 3508. And on the agenda, it talks about Rancho Road. It's R-A-N-C-H-O. It's called Rancho. I don't know whether 3501 or 350-- I know 3507, 3508. I'm assuming that 3501, but I would like to make sure that Rancho, R-A-N-C-H-O, is put over to the side because I don't know if we can correct that to make sure that--
Yeah, we can. And basically, the way to do that would be to move to approve this with the addition of Rancho Road, to the extent that that section of Rancho isn't covered by one of those four road numbers.
I would appreciate that. That way, we make sure it's covered. We have had good deals with them. We do have some-- and I might need some advice and reference to what we have done already to where we can send these bills through them. I would appreciate your assistance in how we need to do that. We have had a pretty good working condition with them, but if we may make sure that whether it's 3501 or 3 or whatever, we want to make sure that Signal Road, Signal Road, and also Rancho is involved in that. Signal Road and Rancho.
My understanding is that Signal and Rancho are-- those are alternative names for two of those roads, but to the extent that they're not, we can just go ahead and add those in.
If you will, please.
And they'll-- I know that this is signed. It's just an electronic signature. So if you move to approve this, then we'd send this back with that written in and get another signature back from them today?
Thank you. Thank you.
So we'd only do that if we find out 3501, 37, or 8 are not those roads?
Yes, that's correct.
3507, 3508 are correct. We also have what they call cash 3501, whether that's it, but make sure that we do have Signal and Ranch identified.
Okay.
Because that's why it's on the inventory. Am I correct? Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. You want a second, or you wanna come back to it, or what's the pleasure?
My pleasure would be to let him correct it before they sign it. We'd go on and amend it at that point in time. They haven't been given this, have they?
Who?
The agreement. The other people--
Oh, yeah. No, they have-- we've been working on this with them for a couple of weeks. They've already signed this.
Goodness.
And so, I mean, we'd need to send it back to add Signal and Rancho to the extent that that's-- those aren't covered by those other two road numbers.
Would that be all right? Do we need to just ask for an amendment in reference to that?
Yes, and they'll give that to us.
We can approve it with the addition of those two roads.
That's right.
To make sure they're covered.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the road damage reimbursement agreement and to include, not only County Roads 3501, 3503, 3507, and 3508, but also to include Rancho Road and Signal Ridge Road, or Signal Road?
Yes.
Signal Road. Okay.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move Action Item Number Two to Old Business for next meeting. Under New Business, we have a consent calendar. Commissioners, entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Action Items, Approval of Accounts Payable?
I'm making a motion. We pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Line Item Transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Budget Amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna skip payroll and personnel till after item number one. Action item number one is reorganizing staff in the Facilities Department. Commissioners, in the Facilities Department, we have been advertising for close to two years for a electrician technician, electrical technician, and we have-- and that position paid $65,000 a year, and we have failed to get any applicants. So Facilities has asked that we change their department to add a tech-- maintenance tech two position, so that they can beef up the maintenance facilities. And then they want to-- there's a custodian two. It's on-- in payroll that is filling a vacancy, and they would like to add a position for another custodian two. And the differential in the money will be $25,000 plus benefits, because it's 65, and it goes to 45 for the maintenance two, which leaves us 20,000. And so we've got a little bit of shorties there. But this year, because we haven't been able to fill positions, there's plenty of money in their budget to make all this work for this budget, and it'll be an adjustment in next year's budget. Got any questions, or does that make sense? All right. I entertain a motion for approval of the reorganization-- of reorganizing staff in the Facilities Department.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move back up to Approval of Payroll and Personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action Item Number Two, County Judge's Office filing a claim with the Texas Congress over public accounts for unclaimed capital credits pursuant to Local Government Code 381.004 and Texas Property Code 74.602. Commissioners, this is something we've been doing for years. We apply with the state in any unclaimed property that is-- gets redistributed to different state agencies, and we're included in that. We've been getting neighborhood of $60,000, I think, a year out of it for the last several years, but we have to apply for it. This gives me the authority to sign the application. So I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action Item Number Three, Approved Contract with Fee Smith Law Firm for Litigation Services. Daniel?
All right. This is a letter that I handed out earlier. This is-- would be a contract to work with me on defending a lawsuit that was filed against the county and one of the district courts and a whole bunch of other people. We've already submitted that suit to TAC, and they've denied coverage because the guy who sued sued for sanctions rather than for damages. I think it's the same thing, but in the meantime, while we're working that out with TAC, this-- if you approve this contract or ratify the contract that I've already signed, then they would work to defend people with the county and the county itself and the district court itself. So I can answer any questions that you have, although it's relatively self-explanatory. They're gonna do the same things that I do with defending lawsuits.
So the state didn't help us defend in the state district court?
The state. So the Attorney General is representing the state, DFPS, and the district judge.
All right.
But that's all. The other nine are not-- are, well, in a different category, where they're not covered by the AG, they're not covered by TAC, and four of those are people that are not related to the county. So even with this, they wouldn't necessarily have an attorney. I don't-- I mean, that case has been already moved to a different federal court. I think it's very quickly gonna be dismissed. It's a ridiculous claim.
Okay. All right. Entertain a motion for approval of Action Item Number Three?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action Item Four, Discuss Considerable Possibly Take Action Regarding an Interlocal Agreement to Participate in the Tax Increment Investment Zone Number One for the City of Caddo Mills, Texas. Daniel?
All right. We have people from Caddo Mills here as well to answer any questions. Basically, this is what we had the presentation on a few weeks ago. This is a TERZ deal for the county to participate along with the hospital and the city of Caddo Mills for development over there. I'm sure that you probably remember the paperwork that was handed out that shows how that goes through every year and how much money may potentially come in based on what the increment value is. This is basically, if you agree with this, to do this, and the county would have one member of the TERZ board that the county would need to reappoint every time that term comes up. That board makes decisions on spending of the money that then has to be approved and ratified through the city council, but doesn't have to come back through the Commissioners' Court. And so the only thing that would have to come back through Commissioners' Court later are other technical things, like we've done for the city of Greenville TERZ two or three times over the past five or six years. Mostly, though, what this is, is basically, rather than the county collecting all of the property taxes, all the property taxes that are currently in place, that's a base, everything that comes in during the term of the TERZ, that's over and above that. That's called the increment. The way that this agreement is written, the participation agreement, 70% of the county's increment amount would then go back into the TERZ for funding for infrastructure spending and other types of spending that are similar to that, all of which have to be pre-approved through this separate document called the Project and Financing Plan. I've worked on that very extensively for the city's TERZ that the county is also a participant in. And then about three years ago, the county agreed to participate in another TERZ for a giant sewer line just east of Royce City. The way that this is set up is similar to those. It's just, I think that both of those are 50% of the increment funding. This one, the-- what they're asking for is 70% of the increment funding. So it's important to remember, though, that that's-- the increment funding is money that's not already there. It's gonna be based on the additional tax base from the building of things on that property, and then just the property value itself. When they're-- they're all gonna lose their ag exemptions when they start building there, so there's gonna be some rollback taxes and some, you know, additional money to the county. If the county accepts it the way that it is, then for the term of that TERZ agreement, the county would get 30% of that new tax money. The other 70% would go into spur development, quicker and higher quality development of that area. And then at the end of the TERZ agreement, or the TERZ lifespan, then 100% of the money then would come into the county.
We get all of the rollback, though?
That's, I believe, so. That's, uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay. She can, she can, her head, yes, back in the back. We can trust Matt.
Plus, you lose a road out of this, correct, David?
Several roads.
Yeah.
So I, I know that they're here to answer any questions. Um, if y'all have any legal questions, we can, uh, certainly go into executive session. Um, but, uh, I mean, the only real difference with this is the seventy percent versus the fifty percent for the other two that were, uh, that we've already participated in.
Any questions?
Uh, what was the term?
Thirty years.
Thirty, yeah.
Am I correct? That's, um, good enough, thank you.
Any questions?
Daniel, so my understanding is there's initial project plan that's gonna be about sixty million dollars worth of infrastructure investment. Um, and currently, I guess they're anticipating revenue, something in the area of a hundred and forty million to be generated off of the, uh, the lifespan of this, this TERS. Um, is it, is it gonna negatively, and maybe this is a question for the city, if we brought that seventy percent back to fifty percent in line with our other TERS agreements, is that gonna negatively impact their ability to get what they need done, done?
Well, it'll give them less money, uh, so, I mean, just generally overall, it would have a negative impact on their spending, uh, 'cause it'll be, uh, uh, between one-point-five and two million dollars less, uh, per year, I believe.
So you're, how are you considering that, Mark? I mean, these are kinda apples and oranges.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, asking the question. Um, I, is it, our other two TERS are fifty percent?
Our other two, our other two TERS?
I'm not opposed to seventy, but I wanna make sure I'm understanding this.
Well, the difference in this one especially's got several different points. Uh, A, we lose, uh, the city takes over the maintenance of several county roads, mile and a half or something of county roads, I believe. Uh, also, this TERS is to attract, uh, developers from doing muds in order to bring them into the city so that the city can control them, so therefore the city has control over the development, will get a higher quality of development. Plus, we don't have to provide law enforcement to it, where Greenville, when we did the TERS, all that was already being done by the city, so there wasn't any additional cost to the city of Greenville, they already had that. So, we get a lot of benefit out of this. Plus, if you throw in the things and the wild stories we hear that are probably mostly true of, of the type of developments that these bu, uh, muds are attracting, with the juvenile delinquencies and juvenile crimes and, and the inferior construction and more clustered lots where we'd have to end up, you know, not only policing that, but incarcerating probably at a higher rate than what the city will have with a better class of development. I think, uh, the additional costs will be more than made up by the savings that we're gonna get out of, of a nicer development.
Sure, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I just wanted to clarify. The other point of clarification, uh, Daniel, is that my understanding is this, this area's gonna be annexed. When does that annexation be, when does that process begin? Is that immediately? Okay. That, that's all my questions.
The developers just waiting on this to, to sign agreement with them to be asked to be annexed in, if I understood it correctly?
Yes, sir. Mary Petty with P Three Works, we are the TERS administrator for the city of Caddo Mills. Um, to answer your second question, yes, there is a development agreement that will only become effective in the event the county and the hospital district participate in the TERS, um, and then that requires annexation to commence immediately. It is taking land out of the ETJ, they have already petitioned for a mud, the city was protesting it, and so they stayed that mud request, waiting for these components. Um, and so that goes to your first question. The city of Caddo Mills has taken a policy position that they're going to use the TERS to pay for infrastructure that benefits the entire zone. So they're not using it for neighborhood-specific reimbursements to the developer, but because they're doing that and they've made that policy direction, the developer's responsible for oversizing and significant contributions in construction, which they're looking to the TERS to repay them. If we reduce the increment, it's a slower payback, which means that it's a larger carry cost for the developer, causing us to lose that position of, we're gonna be able to pay you off very quickly. Um, the city is also, um, willing to issue geo and co bonds in order to make that occur that will be funded through the TERS increment. Um, so there's a, a partnership there between the city taking some proactive, um, policy direction, and then the developer being willing to build those oversizing components with the anticipation of that greater increment, returning them a reimbursement faster for the oversizing. So again, the increment's only being used to fund infrastructure that benefits that entire zone, not just their development.
Thank you, that's very helpful, and I think it's helpful for the public to understand the different participation rates on the TERS, TERS that we have, so thank you.
I have one question. This is not a mud-type situation.
What we're trying to stop.
Yes, sir, so they have a mud now. What you will see is you'll see, uh, an MMD, and that's a different thing. That is where the city has to consent for it to be in the city, but it is a mechanism that functions inside the city limits that allows the developer to fund their infrastructure, but they have to submit to all the requirements of being in the city limits.
I, I wanna tell you something, we've, I've been involved in this from the very first in reference to Greenville and all this, and has worked out for the county and also the cities also. Uh, therefore, very much, I believe this is a positive move.
Any other questions or discussion? Any other comments? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all, thank you, man. And Joel, I saw you back there, sorry. All right. Uh, action item five, connecting agenda, uh, correcting, excuse me, agenda item eighteen-four-twenty-six from commissioners' court on October tenth, twenty-twenty-three to reflect the correct number of feet upgraded. The correction should show that four thousand three hundred and sixty feet of County Road twenty-one forty-six in precinct run one was upgraded?
Correct, Judge, we just, we did a little bit less, and so we wanted to make this correction, so our inventory is correct.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve this correction?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, the request for permission to do work within County Road right-of-way along County Road eleven-oh-six. We are looking to install a single-phase overhead distribution line approximately two foot inside of the north right-of-way line of County Road eleven-oh-six in precinct one under normal stipulations.
Make a motion, we approve this under the normal stipulations?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven, the request for permission to do work within County Road right-of-way along County Road forty-one sixty-two in Caddo Mills. The job entails boring under the road to the Caddo Crossing subdivision in precinct two under normal stipulations. Sixty-two, I'm sorry.
Make a motion, we approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number eight, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right-of-way line of County Road twenty-six forty-six in precinct two under normal stipulations.
Make a motion, we approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number nine, the request for permission to construct and placement of fiber optic cable, which consists of an underground installation. There is, this request is for road crossing on Timber Creek Lane, which is located in Greenville Hunt County, Texas, in precinct three under normal stipulations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number ten, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right-of-way of County Road thirty-five oh seven in precinct three under normal stipulations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number eleven, the request for permission to do work within the right-of-way, County right-of-way along County Road forty-three oh one, eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-five feet east of the intersection of County Road forty-three oh one and County Road forty-three oh two, uh, three oh three-seven County Road forty-three oh one. We are looking to install a single-phase overhead distribution line forty-five feet across County Road forty-three oh one and need to install a pole approximately one foot inside of the southern right-of-way of County Road forty-three oh one in precinct four under normal stipulations.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twelve, the request for permission to do work within the County Road right-of-way along County Road forty-five oh two. Encore will be replacing poles and upgrading utility lines in precinct four under normal stipulations.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number thirteen, the request for permission to do work within the County right-of-way along County Road forty-five oh two. Encore will be replacing poles and upgrading utility lines in precinct four under normal stipulations.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number fourteen, upgrade of approximately one thousand five hundred and sixty-two feet of County Road eleven sixty-four from dirt to rock in precinct one.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Is this escrow or a county expense?
I'm sorry, uh, this is at county expense. And I make the motion again.
You make, well, okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number fifteen, a variance request for road furniture in precinct one. Brian, you wanna brief us?
All right, this is a, uh, this is a family-to-family division. Uh, it's up on, uh, an FM road in precinct one, and the, uh, it's parents and, and daughter who are, are looking at, at dividing this tract of land. Um, they are short about twenty-six feet, twenty-six and a half feet from having what they need to do two tracks, and they're, uh, they're proposing to do two, about four-acre tracks, which would require two hundred feet of road furniture for each one. Uh, and like I said, they're, they're about twenty-seven feet short, twenty-six and a half feet short of having what they need to be by the rule.
Thirteen foot per lot.
Thirteen foot per lot.
Right, okay.
Pretty, pretty minor.
All right.
They are, they are here if you have any question.
Yes.
To speak with them.
Is this family dividing it?
I'm sorry?
Is it, you say it's just a family?
This, this is family to family, yes, sir.
Oh, her mother and, uh, parents are buying the piece in front, if I understood correctly?
That's right, the parents are...
They're gonna buy in front and build, and the daughter lives behind it.
That's right.
Uh, been out there for some period of time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how long the, uh, the daughter's been out there, and what it is, is the parents, uh, the, the daughter has her house on the parents' land, and they realize that there could be some, uh, some issues with, with mortgage titling and everything else to have two houses on one track, so they're obviously wanting to, uh, they're wanting to be able to split it so that they can have their house, and the daughter can have her house on her track, so...
What about culverts on twenty-one ninety-four? They gonna, I assume they're gonna use the other driveways access, but...
They are going to use the existing driveway for access? That's, uh, that's all good and fine. Uh, I feel like in the future, if, if either tract is ever owned by someone who's not family, which we all know we're not gonna own it forever.
Right.
Uh, I feel like I would like to have some sort of a guarantee from Tech Dot that they would have the ability to put in a new driveway if that, if that comes up in the future. Uh, that's, that's really my only, uh, my only big concern, 'cause if something happens, they have to stop using that driveway, and then Tech Dot won't give them a, a culvert. Well, we've, we've got a whole different can of worms opened up then, so...
Would it be that or simply an access easement agreement that would secure the use of that driveway?
I would recommend an access easement to them, just to protect themselves, uh...
I'd probably do both.
I mean, I would, I would do both. I would wanna per, a permit, uh, guaranteed from, from Tech Dot that they could have a driveway culvert, but now using that existing driveway, I feel like everybody should protect themselves with an access easement.
They, they, mortgage companies will require it, or should, they used to.
Mortgage companies gonna require it.
Yeah.
That's right.
On the last page in reference to this, it's in red, uh, yes, it's the last page. Was all this one piece of property, in other words, eventually they're gonna have it broke down to three?
No, the, uh, the, the odd-shaped track that's on the west side and around behind it.
Yes.
That was a separate tract of land. That's a separate, almost ten-acre track of land that...
And a track of record a long time before our, our rules came into play.
That's right, and, and actually, uh, their son owns that piece. Their daughter owns the piece with the house on it, and they are wanting to do the, the smaller piece up front.
I don't have a whole lot of heartburn with it. I, I, again, I'd caution them to make sure that they either get an easement from the daughter with the maintenance, some kind of maintenance agreement, 'cause mortgage companies are probably required, if not now, sometime in the future. Uh, having been in the title business twenty-eight years before I was up here, that, we saw that all the time. Uh, and go ahead and have a culvert, uh, permit and/or install it, probably would be a good insurance policy also, just for the future. If you ever need to sell it, wanna sell it, have to sell it, whatever, you never know what the future holds. I would leave it, 'cause somebody in the future might not wanna driveway, common driveway. Uh, and it, the, the, on busy foreign markets now, the state requires four hundred foot of separation, right, or five...
I think it's, I think it's four hundred and twenty-five feet on roads higher than fifty or fifty-five miles an hour.
All right, where the separation between driveways has to be four hundred and twenty-five feet, so you'd wanna make sure that this is not a heavily-traveled road, I don't think, right now. So you might, it probably wouldn't be a problem today, but it could be in the future, so might, might be a good insurance policy to do that.
I think the speed limit is sixty, sixty or sixty-five.
I think it's fifty-five or sixty, hon.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I don't, I don't see, anybody got any other questions? I entertain a motion for approval of the variance.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And this does not require a plat, since it's family to family, so that'll free them up to go, go ahead and do what they need to do. All right. Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
I have one question, uh, as far as your water, have you checked with your water companies in reference to... Because I know, the reason I'm asking this is basically having to do with cash.
That's not cash up there.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is I don't know what their policy is.
Right, and so that's what started it, actually. So I called the water company, and they says, "Well, you have to have separate addresses", right? And so you need two meters, two addresses, and so I called the survey company to get it platted, and they says, "Well, you better talk to Hunt County", and that's when we discovered that each piece, you know, four acres, four acres, needs two hundred feet each, and that's when we realized we're thirteen feet short on each. So, good question, and so we have talked to them, but...
Great. It's gonna work out?
It will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Glad we, glad we could help on this one. We don't grant a lot of variances, 'cause it really messes things up, so, but this is a good example of why we do allow them, so...
We were told that.
Yeah. They bet. Yep. All right, action item number sixteen, the mending plat of Piney Ridge Estates, lots one through six in precinct four.
Uh, this plat was approved, you know, last, last meeting or meeting before, and, uh, realized that they had a Scrubner's error on the plat, so they're just, they're fixing the legal description error.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seventeen, the replat of Dove Hill Estates, lot one, to be known as Garza Edition in precinct two.
Uh, and actually, this is in precinct one, it's in the, uh, the precinct one annex.
Okay.
The...
In, in the new section, okay. Precinct one, all right.
And this is a, this is an old subdivision, and actually, that, that southwest corner that you see was originally part of this, this platted lot, and someone years ago went through and sold it, uh, leaving just three acres as opposed to four. Uh, and there again, it's hard to change the past, uh, but these folks have purchased it and it's actually a family-to-family division. It's, it's a mother, daughter, and then grandson who are gonna be owning the lots, but since it's a plated lot, they've gotta change that, that recorded plat, so...
All right, any questions? None, I'll open it up for public comment. Has anybody here wished to speak for or against the replat of Dove Hill Estates, Lot One? Being none, I close the public testimony. Uh, Greensters, entertain a motion for approval of action item seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item eighteen, the replat of Meadow, Meadowlark Estates, Lot Eight in Precinct Four.
Uh, this is a, uh, they're, they're proposing to sever off an acre and, and sell the, the remaining piece, or vice versa, maybe sell the acre and keep the remaining piece, however it works. It's, it's kind of odd looking with this little strip on the north side and, uh, I spoke with the surveyor about it. What had happened is somewhere along the way, a surveyor came in, did some surveying and didn't, didn't mark the correct corners and someone built a fence and then problems had compounded on top of that one mistake on down, until these guys figured out, the surveyor figured out, hey, there's a problem out here and about a sixty-two foot bust. So, that's what leaves the, uh, this little strip on the north end was, uh, just a, a bunch of compounding problems over the years.
So is there a house on one of these lots?
There's a house on the one acre tract.
Okay. All right, any questions? At this time, I'll open it to public comments. Uh, anybody wishing to speak for or against the replat of Meadowlark Estates, uh, come forward and speak. Is there anybody in line? All right, being none, I'll close the public testimony. Uh, entertain a motion for approval of action item eighteen.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nineteen, replat of Mallard Point, Phase One, Section Two, to be known as Mallard Point, Phase Two, Section One in Precinct Three.
All right, um, this is the, uh, the new section that we were speaking of earlier with, uh, with the M.A.S. Um, they're still in construction, they're still working on it, uh, I've...
What lot was the couple that was up here earlier, the two people up here? What lot numbers were they?
I, I don't know, I have to look on the, uh...
Okay, all right. I was just curious where they were.
Yeah, they're, I have a feeling they're probably kind of down...
They're on Mallard Drive that comes in off of sixty-nine, that first street?
I'm, yes.
That's where they are, okay.
I believe that's correct.
So they'd have to be on lots twenty-seven to thirty-three, somewhere in there.
Yes, yeah, one of those first five lots, those are the ones that, that seem to be having some water issues out there. Um, there again, whether it was caused by the construction here or, or caused by something else, we'll, uh...
Let's get it figured out.
Mark Higman and I'll look into it and, and we'll, uh, we'll see what's...
We got several easements, look like, I don't know if any of them are drainage, uh, it looks like it's all utility. We need to check that plat and make sure.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull the plans for the first section of Mallard Point and look, look, study their drainage as well.
I'd like to get a copy of, uh, in re, in reference to who talked that way, I can talk to them also.
As big as those lots are behind them, it looks like if, if it's not working right, that, that, uh, Altura could figure out a way to put a, a ditch back there or, or some...
Yeah, that's, that's on those really deep lots.
Yeah, it's those big old lots, so they oughta be able to figure out a way to help it if it needs help, so...
Well, should we, uh...
This here, right from y'all's information, what we're talking about right now really does not have anything to do with those lots.
I don't, I, I don't know, but if it, if it's blocked, the, uh, the way those, those original lots were designed, if they were designed to flow back and to drain into that golf course, which behind them would've been part of the fairway.
That's correct.
Uh, and then they, Altura's come in and raised it up, you know, there, there could be an issue where Altura needs to, to do something, uh, whether they, they do a drainage easement to drain that water out or whatever, but if they've, if, if these new plans aren't agreeing with how those old plans were, that's the, that's the biggest issue.
Brian, do we need to hold off on approving these until...
I think I'd like to have another, another couple of weeks to at least look into it and, and see if we're gonna need to, uh, request them to add a, a drainage easement or something.
We don't have a time limit in reference to this, do we?
Not on this big old project.
I ask that we, I ask that we put it aside at this time and have them look at it.
I think that's a good idea, I don't have a problem with that.
Not on a shot clock issue. Now, this, this is a replat that required a...
Yeah, this is a replat of the old Phase Two, actually.
So do we have to have a public hearing regardless of whether we pass on it now or not?
Or do we have to do another...
I mean, you, if you're gonna move it to the exception to another meeting, you do that public...
Okay.
Put it under old business, maybe we put it under old business.
Keep your plats.
Thank you.
Or do we need to do another public notice for the next meeting?
I think so, yeah. I mean, we can do a public notice now, but it might be deficient, because somebody might hold it deficient in the future, so it's, it's, it's a public notice, so it's gonna have to go out again.
I agree.
Okay. I'd say we just rescind it all out and redo it when we're ready.
Probably gonna need to push it further than to the next meeting.
How long you have to get notice?
Fifteen days prior.
Yeah. Is that gonna create a problem for them?
For Altura?
Yeah.
No, I don't...
They're a long ways away, aren't they?
They have to wait another, another couple of weeks or another month and be okay. I mean, it's, they, they're still in the, uh, in construction phase anyway, so...
All right, let's, let's put it on, uh, old business for, well, let's just, uh...
Postpone.
Postpone this to a future date when we're ready, so we don't put it on next agenda necessarily, but y'all do hang on to your plats, so...
Just don't throw those away, please.
Do you postpone, you need to say a specific date?
June eleventh?
Postpone it till June eleventh? Okay. Do we need motions and orders?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so action item nineteen is postponed until June eleventh. Uh, action number twenty, final plat of High Five Estates in Precinct One.
Uh, pretty, pretty simple, two lot subdivision. Uh, I am waiting on escrow for, uh, road upgrades, so I would recommend a conditional approval on this until they, uh, until they get that paid. And I've been in touch with them, I think they were out of town this week and they'll, they said they'll get in and, and pay it as soon as they can.
All right, entertain a motion for action item twenty, conditioned on, uh, escrow money being placed for the improvement of County Road. What number is it?
Thirty-seven.
Ten thirty-seven.
Ten thirty-seven, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item twenty-one, the final plat of Roberts Estates in Precinct Three.
All right, uh, this is right there in Dixon on sixty-nine. Um, it's kind of a, kind of a long, narrow lot, but, uh, and, you know, it's, it's pretty heavily encumbered with building lines and, and everything else, but there is still, uh, buildable space on it and they can still build a pretty good-sized house on it, so, uh, it's certainly usable.
All right, any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number twenty-two, the final plat of Murdoch Estates in Precinct Four.
Okay, and this one is a, uh, this is actually a, a family-to-family division that the, uh, the surveyor actually recommended these folks to go ahead and, and go through with a plat, just keep it clean and, and make it easier on them in the future, and they agreed. Most of the lots are pretty big, there's one lot down there that's, that's small, uh, you know, four and a half acres, but they've got plenty of furniture, lots of furniture all around the road and, and it meets all the requirements.
They, they've got some flooding on it.
It's got quite a...
Does Lot Two have enough room to build on it?
It's, it's actually already built on.
Oh, it is? Out of the floodplain?
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty-three, the final plat of Munions, Munions, Munios, thank you, forty-three oh nine edition in Precinct Four.
Uh, this is a, uh, fairly simple plat. He, uh, he has a house there and he has a shop there and he is selling the shop, separate from the house, so, um...
No upgrade on the road or anything?
Nope, no upgrade on the road, road is nice and pretty, pretty new, it's, uh, it's wide through there and he's, he and the neighbors actually are the ones who got together and paid for the upgrade several years back.
Mm-hmm. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Any comments, Daniel on the line? Anything else before the court?
I'd like to point out...
Come forward, Mark. Maybe the only time in my life I've been nice to a law horn.
You like me, you know it. I just wanna make one comment, because there's just so many on here regarding Encore, Encore's request, uh, put in new lines and new poles. I just wanna make you guys aware that there is absolutely no consideration for anybody that lives within a mile of wherever they're doing work and they'll just shut off power to everybody in the area. So, this one that's on eleven oh six, we live halfway down eleven oh eight and they've already told us there's gonna be a major interruption. I'm like, come on, guys. So, just FYI that I don't know if there's anything you can do or anything you put in there that says, you know, it should only affect the area that you're working on, not everyone in the entire area, so just FYI, I don't know if y'all are even aware of that.
Not aware of it, but I don't understand electricity, so I'm not...
Well, I'm pretty sure they can abridge and gr, and reroute the grid just temporarily instead of shutting down the whole neighborhood, so FYI.
All right, thank you. Anything else before the court today? None, I entertain a motion to go into executive session under items one through four.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll go into executive session at eleven oh two. Thank y'all for coming today. Motion carries. We'll go into executive session at eleven oh two. Thank y'all for coming today.
See if we can get back up.
We're live again.
All right, it's 11:44, we're back in regular session. Is there anything else before the court today? Being known to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 11:44. Thank you.